Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and convene into open session. Our, we are adjourning from closed session with no action taken. We'll start with the low call, or call to order and low call, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Present.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Spur?
Present.
Councilmember Parrott?
Here.
And Mayor Turner?
Here.
Greg Scott, would you be willing to lead us in the pledge to name?
Oh, I can remember how to do that. Ready, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is acceptance of the agenda. And urgency items, do we have any urgency items?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
With a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are expected to be routine and non-controversial, requiring no discussion. They can be removed from the consent agenda to be taken up by request of the councilmember or a member of the public. Tonight's items are: Organizes waive reading except by title of any ordinance under consideration. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of November 6, 2018. Approve the warrant register of November 14, 2018. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency in the city of Lakeport. And approve an amendment to application 2018-028 with staff recommendations for additional street closures and the addition of a roller rink and slide for the Dickens Fair to be held November 24, 2018. Does council wish to remove any of these items? Does the public wish to speak on any of these items? If not, we'll bring it back for motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is citizens input. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the board for up to three minutes on a subject which is within our purview of the council but is not already scheduled on tonight's agenda. Do we have any requests? Moving on to council business. Our item from finance director is to adopt a resolution approving the city of Lakeport Municipal Sewer District and Lakeport Municipal Financing Agency of Lakeport Investment Policy for idle funds as recommended by staff.
Meaning Mayor, councilmembers, filmed for you is the, is updates to an investment policy. And primarily the updates are to include all the current jurisdictions in which your body oversees, besides the city of Lakeport being the municipal sewer district and also the financing agency. The policy does require an annual review of the policy, so in the future it will probably be on consent if there isn't any changes. And those were, that was pretty much the extent of the change. I believe there was one other change to increase the FDIC limit from $100,000 to $250,000, which is, which is current in the industry. It does have a lot of other information in there governing the types of investments the city can enter into, most of which is governed by California government code. And over the past few years, the city hasn't had much of an investment policy. I know Dan had done some late work to get it moving. And that was easy to pick up and continue with the process. Last March, the investment committee was recommissioned by the city council and we began working to update the policy and explore some opportunities to, you know, enter into some investments other than L.A., where the city has had most of its investment over the last few years. L.A. has improved slightly since the economic downturn. Last year it earned about 1.4%. So in November, the, the city undergone into the committee, purchased, purchased $2 million worth of CDs. $1 million, $1 million of the general fund and $1 million of the sewer fund. And you'll see there on page two of the staff report, a breakdown of how those CDs were purchased. It's a tiered structure where $200,000 is purchased, maturing each year over the next five years at a much better, much better rate than 1.4%. Double, double the 1.4%. Each, each of those funds will earn, if we continue to roll as they mature, it'll earn nearly $30,000 a year per fund. And then the last little schedule there is, is a snapshot of what's the total funds of the city and how they're invested. You can see the $2.5 million in L.A., the $10 million in certificates of deposit. The majority, 50%, or almost $8 million in the checking account. And then the $4.7 million, which were the bond proceeds from the solar financing, which have been put in U.S. government securities while they sit with the trustee and we draw those funds down. So the concentrations there all, all fit into the policy. And at this time, we'd ask you to adopt a resolution to adopt the policy.
Thank you. Does council have any questions?
On the U.S. government securities, are we collecting any interest on that?
Yes. Yeah, when, when the bond proceeds were sold and being held by the agents, you have the option to basically leave it in a checking account or invest it for a nominal amount while we draw it down and spend it. So it'll sit in those government security investments. It's like a mutual fund made up of, I mean, it's extremely risk-free. It's like 70% cash. And then there's some other government bonds that it sits in and earns a little bit of interest before we spend it.
And there's no penalties for pulling it out or any of that stuff?
No, no, no penalties at all.
And I noticed that you'd set up here in this thing about how the broker gets his money upfront, I guess, is that?
Yeah, the, the fees charged by the broker are built into the rate. So, you know, we may actually be earning 3.65 on a five-year term and then they're taking, they're giving theirs off the top. So what we're seeing is 3.55. What they're selling us is 3.55 and that's what we get.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, but I just had a question on the mutual funds. I, I can't see us ever putting city money in mutual funds. Is, is that, I mean, I know the government code says you can, you know, a small percentage, but why would we, why would we ever do that? It just seems risky.
It is, it is. And if we, I, we personally wouldn't invest in mutual funds unless it was vetted through the investment committee and it was decided that that would be a good idea. I mean, that's something that-
So you wouldn't just do it? But I'm wondering, do we need to keep it in there?
Um, no, we, we could, we could pull it out.
I, I would take it out. I mean, we could always come to that point where we say, you know, right now, the best option is this and then come back to it, right?
Yeah.
But for the future, I just would feel better if that wasn't in there.
Okay.
Well, personally, I, I disagree. Because generally speaking, because of the other tenants that you have included in the policy, that the historical performance would be greatly considered before, based on what's here. And it does say in there, while things go up and down, I believe that the potential for gain is far greater than particularly, I mean, I would never put my retirement in a CD. And while the mutuals may go down here and again, the overall average is far greater than, than the performance by CDs. And I just don't consider that to be something that's quote-unquote risky. I just think it's something that's temporal. And at certain times, based on the performance and the historical data and the fact that we can take it out rather quickly, I, I really don't think that that's something we necessarily have to do. I, I think that there's a great potential for that. And I think the whole idea of what we're doing here is rather than having money sit idly at 1.4 or even 3.25, if you can get, you know, 20% in short run on a mutual investment that's a small percentage of our overall portfolio, I would think that that seems to me that might even be more prudent. Because we're not talking about going helter-skelter into some, you know, eco-stocks that are, that some people are doing and ballooning a bunch of the city's money. But I think prudent investment based on historical data might be a really good way to go, rather than getting a 3.5. If you could get double or triple that, which is what we're essentially doing here, is not something we want to turn out. I'm not saying we should do it, but I don't think we should limit ourselves. You know, and I think that, I think that mutuals is a part that should be an integral part of a portfolio.
I, I don't think so because we're too small as a city. We don't have enough money laying around to do that with, to have any risk at all. It's not our money. It's, it doesn't belong to us. It's the people's money and I think there should be no risk.
Well, I've based, like I said, based on historical data and the overall, I don't think you can find any of the major funds that have lost money in the long run. And they all probably perform four to five times greater than the 1.4 that we're talking here, so.
Right, and the thing about mutual funds, they are much more volatile than-
But they're highly diversified.
They are highly diversified, but what's key about a mutual fund is that you're continuously contributing, or hopefully you're continuously contributing so that you're buying it high and low. So over time, you see gains. To purchase a mutual fund, you know, with a million dollars and then you have economic downturn, obviously there's risk to that. But that's, I mean, that's the, the good thing about a mutual fund is that if you're continuously contributing, then you hedge against those downturns because you're buying low in a downturn and it's going to increase.
But is that how the city would buy the mutual funds?
I mean, it, it allows us the opportunity to, to investigate all opportunities. Not that I think, as a finance director, that I would be looking at any of those opportunities anytime soon. Like this, this seems like it's going to work out really well for us.
Yeah.
We may discuss like some, a slightly more risky stuff with what we're going to do with the interest that's earned off of this. But again, I mean, all those decisions will be made by the investment committee, not by me as an individual.
I just have a problem with closing the door on an opportunity forevermore and integrating a policy that absolutely knocks it out. I don't think that we should, like I said, do it. But like you said, you take the interest that we've made and you put it in. And when the thing goes down, then you buy more shares. When it goes back up, the money that you bought on the lower shares, you make more money, and then the money on the next. And it just, it, it grows. And there's nothing more powerful than compound interest.
And again, it would be a committee decision. It wouldn't be staff.
I, I just have a real problem with, with taking something out of there in perpetuity because of, of some potential risk. Because I think there's also a huge potential gain there as well. So I guess it's just a perspective, different people, so.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, and the current-
But believe me, I-
That we have now, I, you know, I retract the situation. But I'm just thinking into the future. If, you know, there was a finance director that was more aggressive, I just don't-
More careless?
Think that, that's not a gamble that should be taken.
Hey, could you, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Could you go over the three priorities? I found those helpful as far as guiding principles for fiscal decisions.
In the policy?
Yes.
So in the staff report, it lists the significant tenants of the policy? Is that what you're referring?
I think there was, like, the first priority is safety. The second priority is something, where was that?
Objectives. Item one is safety in principle. Item two is liquidity. Item three is return on investment. And four is social and political considerations.
And so those are priorities that the investment committee keeps in front of them as they do these decisions?
Correct.
Okay. Which gives me a level of comfort because then now that we, even now that we have a staff and a committee that we're very comfortable with, knowing that those principles will go past any individual membership of the committee, I find this helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, if nobody else wants to take it out, then at least, you know, I have comfort in-
The committee.
The committee and staff.
And the tenants.
Currently.
Currently.
I mean, honestly, I was thinking to the future.
And you should, and as well you should. Because you just never know if you get some renegade, you know, board with some renegade, you know, investment crazy finance director. Anything could happen.
According to the, according to the policy, quarterly investment reports aren't supposed to be reported to the, to the council on a quarterly basis, you know, that'll be, that'll happen going forward.
We're just starting January and then we'll be doing quarterly.
So you guys will see every quarter what, you know, if I've snuck in any mutual funds.
And this is already a big, like, big risk for us. We haven't done anything except L.A.
Right.
So this is, we should have been doing this well.
I think this is a great move.
Now things are a little bit better and we're moving to, you know, a little bit, making a little bit more revenue on some of these funds.
Does the council have any further questions? Or should we open it up to the public?
Well, I was, the thing about the quarterly reports. So if we get quarterly reports and the council doesn't like what's going on, do we have the opportunity to say, hey, hold it? Let's go in a different direction?
Well, yeah, absolutely. You, you make those decisions and you get the mayor or whoever and send it back to the committee and say, hey, take a look at, you know, what you're doing.
The council doesn't like this part, change it, type thing?
Yeah, that's a council decision.
Yeah, I'm just-
Absolutely, now we-
Looking at what happens, what we get to report for. We just look at it and go, oh wow, wow. Or you have the choice of saying, yeah, people like this.
No, absolutely, this is a council decision. If you don't like this direction it's going.
I think this is a great step forward. Congratulations to the staff.
All right, if y'all don't mind, I'm going to open it up to the public now. Anybody? All right, they'll bring it back. For a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution approving the city of Lakeport, city of Lakeport Municipal Sewer District and Lakeport Municipal Financing Agency of Lakeport Investment Policy for idle funds as recommended by staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is to authorize the city manager to sign a purchase order and supporting documents for the procurement of a one and three-quarter ton, no, a one, for his one, three-quarter ton utility service truck from Redwood Ford, the lowest bidder for an amount not to exceed $32,078.68.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Paul was going to be here to present this, but unfortunately was not able to make it. So I'm going to carry this forward for him. We're recommending, or requesting from council authorization of the city manager to sign the purchase order for the Redwood Ford at $32,078.68. This vehicle is for the new EMT position, which is going to be serving our utility divisions. And so if there's any questions, I'd be more than glad to try to answer them.
Questions from council?
Well, I'm sorry about this Doug, because you may not know. I'm looking at the information from this one that we're going to prove. And at the bottom of the thing, it says, your price is $22,622. And it's written in pencil. It's not typed in any of the documents. And I'm wondering, where did he get the $22,622?
I'm not quite sure where, what page.
It would be, it would be under the vehicle order confirmation. It shows that, you know, what the kind of the truck it is, what the options are. And the price is $34,410. And then right on the bottom, there's a penciling in of $22,622 for the truck, $6,760 for the utility box, which gives you $29,382 plus fees, which means tax and license, and that brings it back up to $32,000.
Correct, and-
Where did it go at the $22,622? I don't see that. I seen it go down to $29 somewhere, but I don't see it ever going to $22.
So what I would say that, because I know, Paul follows the protocols that I set.
Right.
So I'm going to stick my neck out there a little bit. And I feel very confident that what that is, is that's our government pricing that we got through either U.S. communities or the JPA program. Because when they, they give it to us, they give it to us what their normal list, you know, their normal selling price is. And then when we get, when they go through the program, they figure out what our government pricing is going to be through that program. And, and I would venture to say that that is what that $22,622 is. Then you add the utility box onto it. And then the thing that I usually always forget on mine is the fees, which always comes back to bite me because they're substantial.
Right, and I see where the fees are. I mean, in the document right above it, it shows you that you have a total tax of $2,500. If you add all that up together, it comes out to the 32 whatever.
Right.
But the problem is, is they say their trade difference is $29,382 and the penciled in one says it's $22,622. I don't see anywhere in any of these other documents other than that penciled in where it shows that. And I'm just making sure that's what we're buying that truck for, is $22,622?
No, what we're buying the truck for is $32,078.68.
I mean, without, without the utility box and the, and the taxes.
Correct.
This is the base truck. Are we getting it for $22,622?
That is my understanding from looking at that, yes. That was like the Hemi, we paid $21,000 for the Hemi, so.
Because that's a good deal.
That is a good deal.
That is a good deal.
And I'd ask if that was available to employees. I was promptly told no.
Because, because the, the second part of this thing is you're looking at a Colorado, Chevy Colorado. And you're going to pay $23,000 for a Chevy Colorado when you're paying $22,000 for a three-quarter ton Ford. Why are we getting two three-quarter ton Fords for $22,000?
Good question. Well, because you have to look at what the vehicle's intent and the vehicle's use is. You know, we're going to get a lot better gas mileage out of-
A Colorado.
Out of the Colorado than we are out of a three-quarter ton vehicle. The Colorado is for our utility superintendent right now. He has commandeered a vehicle from the water department and is using that to get around. And we would like to, now that we're full staff, we would like to return that back to the water department and get a smaller vehicle for the utility superintendent to drive. And when we ran that vehicle through there, you've got to realize too, some of this is on, it's all government price. So for whatever reason, that model was set at that price for the government pricing and that's the best that we could get.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to put you out of spot or anything. It's just seems to me-
Oh, no, it's okay.
It seems to me if I was a person, person, and I'm buying a three-quarter ton Ford truck for $22,000, why am I buying a small truck for $23? You know, that, that's my question in my mind. And I know that they're used for different things, but if you had the bigger truck, it could be used in emergencies for other things.
But the $22,000 George is with no bed. That is-
But the bed is only 600 bucks if you don't use the utility box. So now you're talking still $23,000 for the Ford.
And it's going to cost you a lot more in gas maintenance, George.
Okay, well, whatever. I'm just saying, if it was personally me, I'd buy the two three-quarter tons.
Are there any other questions from council? Any member of the public here to address this item? All right, we'll bring it back to council for a motion.
So we didn't discuss the, the second part of the, of the staff report? Are we taking it, the first one and then going back to the second one?
There are two separate items. We're going to talk about the smaller truck. Come on through, George. Take care of yourself.
There's no further discussion. Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to sign a purchase order and supporting documents for the procurement of one three-quarter ton utility service truck from Redwood Ford, the lowest bidder for an amount not to exceed $32,078.68.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're going to talk about this one.
Okay, George.
Wait, 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 let me read the title. Authorize the city manager to sign a purchase order and supporting documents for the procurement of one utility pickup truck from Matt's A., the lowest bidder for an amount not to exceed $25,975.84. Doug?
Yes, and as, so as not to be redundant, this, this vehicle is to, for the utility superintendent to, so he can return a three-quarter ton truck back to the water department for the staff there where it belongs. And so to answer part of your question, George, in, in all honesty, a part of this is probably through the, the way that the national, the NJP and U.S. communities, when they put these out to bid. Sometimes this depends on a lot of different variables. I'm sure you're quite aware of that. I know you're quite an auto guy, is demand and supply. And I'm, you know, and this is an assumption on my part and we all know what that means. But I'm assuming that the smaller trucks right now are just a little bit more popular and so they're not getting as good a deal because the manufacturers aren't trying to move these trucks. They don't have them stacked up somewhere. And so when you get those kind of supply and demand issues, you always end up paying a little bit more for what's really popular at the time. And I think that's, that's the difference that we're seeing.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Any public input? Great.
I guess I did have one question. Was it just the Chevy Silverado that they looked at? Or did they look at any of the smaller sized trucks?
Well, it was actually a Colorado, Chevy Colorado.
Colorado Silverado, Chevy, that one.
Chevy.
Did they look at Ford and GMC? You know, did they, did they do any other price comparison? Or were they just looking for the one Chevy Colorado?
I would imagine, when, when we do the national trock hours, when it, they're very specific on those size vehicles. And a lot of times you don't have a variety to choose from. You have to pick whatever their listing is what they put out for bid. And to be perfectly honest with Tim, I'm just guessing at that. But I know Paul is pretty thorough. And I know that we strive really hard to try to pick dealerships that are local, if we can utilize them at all, we've always strived to do that. And you'll notice that there was one Chevy in the three-quarter ton listed from the local vendor here, but they didn't have, that pickup apparently wasn't in the program. And so it's very hard for them to compete when they're not in that program.
Got you. Thank you.
But we are getting the smaller one locally.
We just bought all the police cars from the monster. Any further discussion? Is Madam Mayor ready for a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to sign a purchase order and supporting documents for the procurement of a utility truck from Matt's A., the lowest bidder for an amount not to exceed $25,975.84.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is to approve and authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with the chosen engineering firm for the Library Park Seawall replacement design.
This is actually Doug's item, but I just, I want John to explain to you the, what the actual motion we're asking for because we have not come to a complete understanding with the PSA, all the, the one that we're recommending is first choice. So I would like council to allow us to go to the second one if that doesn't, that doesn't happen. So we get another motion that let's present. But Doug wants to speak to this item first before we go. Let me find two.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, council, just a little bit of a background on this, the ongoing saga with the Seawall. As you've noticed in the staff report, this RFP had been set out twice. The first time, we got no respondents. The second time, staff went through every professional magazine we could find, called, literally called 30 firms on the telephone, followed up with 30 firms on the telephone, plus advertising with every known advertising agency out there for these kind of firms. And we got two respondents. for these kind of firms, and we got two responses.
Wow.
And so, right now, we're trying to work out the finer details with the PSA, with the CSP board met, and rank the two firms. We're trying to negotiate with the first firm now, and hopefully, you know, we want to keep this process moving, we desperately want to get going on this design, and that's why we're asking, even though we haven't come to a full agreement, that we're hoping that can be resolved before the next council meeting, and we'd like the city manager to be able to sign that PSA so we can keep this program moving.
And PSA staff for professional services.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, I probably should have stated that.
Okay, I'll jump in at that point. So what the city council, excuse me, the city attorney's office is recommending is just some language in the motion that clarifies the council is authorizing the city staff, you know, designated by the city manager under the city manager's discretion or supervision, to make this decision, that you, that basically we don't need to come back to you before we pull the trigger on negotiations. And so the language that I'm recommending is very similar to what you have, but it's, it says, quote, approve and authorize the city manager to choose an engineering firm for the Library Park seawall replacement design, and to execute, execute a professional services agreement with that firm. I'm happy to read that again, for the record, if necessary.
Does council have any questions?
I wrote it out, and so hopefully my handwriting is okay.
Are there any questions for, from the council, from Doug?
Is there a, I noticed that we're going to get like half a million dollars for the seawall from FEMA, correct? Is that what that said? Did I read that right?
Well, that's going to be a capital project, so with, or they call in FEMA language, a large project. So a large project is actually a reimbursement. Small projects that give you a set amount of dollars, and that's all you get, with the large projects is actual what project cost is, and 75% of that is what FEMA picks up, and so whether it's 500...
It's 90, isn't it, 90 cents?
Well, no, that's, then you add the state's portion.
Oh, then you add the states on top of it, yeah.
So our portion would be 10%?
No, it's 6.78.
Weird.
Less than 7%.
Okay.
Is what our out of pocket would be when it's all said and done. And so, but to answer your question, George, it's not a set amount of X dollars, it's what the actual project costs are. So it could be 500,000, it could be 700,000. So depending on after the engineering's done, and we put it out to bid, and we see what the bid price is, we put it out to contract, the contract's completed, whatever that amount comes out to, that's what FEMA's going to be paying on.
Okay. And do we know approximately what the engineering part of this is going to be?
Doug, explain how that works, too.
To be perfectly honest with you, no, right now we don't know. I mean, a rule of thumb, if you want to just use a general rule of thumb, engineering is typically 10% of whatever the project cost is. So if you have a million dollar project, your engineering can run you about $100,000, and that's just a very broad rule of thumb, you know, depending on different factors. This is a little more complicated, as, you know, it's a seawall, and we're talking about a lot of geotech work in here, and so it could run a little bit more than that, but we won't know until we finish negotiations. But that cost will be picked up by FEMA as well.
Right. So basically, we don't know the cost of what they're going to do until they tell us how much it's really going to cost, and how much the bid comes back, and then we kind of know what they're going to come. So it's catch 22.
It is, it's kind of interesting.
I'm just curious, because that's half a million dollar, you know, that's cool.
Any other questions from council? Would any member of the public here to address this item? See you now, and bring it back for motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's no further discussion.
So again, the motion language is, that I recommend, is, quote, approve and authorize the city manager to choose an engineering firm for the Library Park seawall replacement design, and to execute a professional services agreement with that firm.
Exactly what he just said.
An all circle there.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our final item for the evening, then, is city council communications. Margaret?
Well, I just want to remind everyone about the Dickens Festival. I know we've just passed an order, an approval for the additional street closure, because we're going to have a big flight on Second Street, and we're going to have a road game rate operated by the state, also the event, which should be a lot of fun, a lot of different lights this year and stuff. And I just remind council, we have that joint meeting on December 3rd at 9:00 a.m. at the Council of Presbyterian Church. It's a presentation of our Lake County Economic Development Plan that we helped also, they, to complete by Dr. Adler. So that's, that'll be on the December 3rd, and then that's about it. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I won't say anything except thank you. It's always fun to be able to pinch it for the attorneys in our office, who cover meetings primarily, and so I just want to thank Margaret and the rest of the staff for making me feel welcome today.
You did a great job.
And do you have such a long drive like David did?
Yeah, no, David and I are neighbors, so.
Just really quickly, some project updates. The Lake Shore ER project is probably 99% complete. There'll probably be just a few little punch list items left after tonight. The Hzip, which is the striping contract, is moving forward. We've got 11th Street completed, we've got South Main from Lakeport Boulevard, South to City Lynn is completed, and they're going to turn around and come back through town. The biggest problem that we're facing now, of course, is going to be inclement weather and how that's going to impact that, so, but we're moving forward with that, and just a whole bunch of very small projects. But those are the big ones that I thought you want to know about.
I have a question on that striping thing. I just drove down along the street, you know, it's looking really good. Why do they do two different types of crosswalks? Some are like the blocks, and some are just the straight lines. Is that because that's the way it was, or?
No, that was kind of an engineering staff decision to do that, depending on who and what we have use in those, and the speeds. Have you noticed the one towards 11th Street's a little more bold, stands out a little bit more, because we have a little bit higher speeds in that area than we do down at High Street where the other one is? And so a lot of that was based on road speeds and trying to change things up. If people get used to seeing the same old thing every single time, then it just all kind of blurs. We're trying to figure out ways of breaking things up and breaking patterns up so that it catches people's attention. And that doesn't work really long, long term, but it'll work for a while, and they go, oh, wow, that's different, oh, that's a crosswalk. So.
Well, I'm just curious, you know, why the two different types, and evidently it's to try to get people to slow down.
Try to get people to get their attention.
Good job.
While they're texting.
It wasn't me.
Nick?
I would just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, that as well.
Chief?
Same as Nick, happy Thanksgiving. I have nothing else.
Say the same thing, happy Thanksgiving, but weather looks decent right now for Saturday, so hopefully we'll see everybody at the Dickens Fair as well.
Kelly?
October 1st.
The thing that Doug accomplished that I was really pleased, because I know that we have this beautiful seawall up there, and after the horrible flooding and storms, it, you know, just destroyed it, and sheep pile walls that we had somewhere else were, you know, successfully maintained against a storm, and to get FEMA to go forward and actually do this additional, I think Doug really deserves a lot of credit, because this is going to make this last a lot longer, because I thought that seawall looked fabulous, and they just took it out like unbelievably well with all that wave action and horrendous flooding. So I think that this is real kudos to the staff and to Doug, and all the people that work with FEMA, to get them to upgrade this, because I think this is going to be a big, big plus in the future when we have future flooding, which we will.
Yeah, Doug stepped out, but yeah, it wasn't just an easy thing to get FEMA to.
No, because it's a lot more money.
Yeah, it was.
And we talked about it over time, and he said that he thought that they would take a long-term view, so that they would have to come back here in 10 or 20 years, and so I got to give kudos to Doug for working hard and getting that, and thanks to FEMA for doing that. Happy Thanksgiving.
Council member?
I'm looking forward to Dickens on Saturday to kick off the holidays. Thanks to everyone who put in a ton of work, especially last minute, to make it all happen.
Mayor, for Tim.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Wow, close and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Go ahead, Mr. Trump.